Call to order the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, February 4th, 2020. Roll call.
11:00 our present, your honor, Alder Nicholson will be late.
Very good. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation offered by a guest of Alder, Barb Dorf.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, it's my pleasure to introduce tonight my pastor. Enjoy playing in the parks, swimming in the pools, going to Bay Beach, and enjoying everything this area has to offer. So I'm honored to present Pastor Eer who will do our invocation.
First of all, thank you for the honor of being with you this evening, and on behalf of our congregation and the members who live in your districts, thank you for the time and talents that you share here as you seek to improve the community in which we live. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, from you comes all rule and authority by which the nations of this world are ruled. We give you thanks for the men and women who are elected and appointed to positions of authority over the people of this land. We ask that the goals they set would be high in purpose, the decisions they make would be wise in council, and that they would remain steadfast in their call to serve their neighbor and protect the weakest in our midst, that those who live in this community would be able to reside in quiet peacefulness. In your name we pray. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Approval of the minutes. Motion by Alder from the ninth, second by Alder from the seventh. Any corrections that need to be made? Seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. Minutes have been approved. Approval of the agenda. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the eleventh. Any changes to be made? Seeing no requests, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, if you guys have it. The end of agenda before you has been approved. Onto report by the mayor. Just a couple of quick things during the during the debate on the budget, we talked about and created a resiliency position, and thankfully we were granted those dollars by the Fund for Lake Michigan, so wanted to announce that to all. Thanks to the great work of our chief of staff, Selsine Jeffries, as well as other folks in the city, we were successful in winning those dollars. So that'll be something that we will be bringing back to the council for a budget amendment and to be discussed further in terms of what that job description will look like and the duties of this person. So wanted to update you with that bit of good news. Also just wanted to let you all know, let the public know, that the waters are high unfortunately on Lake Michigan, on our rivers. We had a press conference earlier this week out at with the Brown County Executive Troy Strechenbach and a number of emergency responders, just kind of sending that message to the community, urging community preparedness, just of course urging people to be smart, be safe, take personal responsibility, and also look out for their friends and neighbors who might be in some difficult situations this spring. So there's a website floodinginbc.com that the county has put together, the city's going to be linking to that, that website. There's code red which is available, and we're encouraging folks to sign up for that as well, to stay safe and stay aware of what's going on. So that is all I have for mayor's report. Onto announcements. Alder from the tenth.
Thank you, your honor. I've had the privilege of going on to Madison today, and I, my first time testifying at the state capitol, and Senator Hanson, Representative Grusinski, and myself spoke on the renaming of the Wellon Street Bridge to the Bart Starr Memorial Bridge, and I think it was very well received. We'll see what happens, but it's going to move along, and so I was very honored to have an opportunity to speak on the behalf of Bart Starr and the bridge. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the sixth.
Yes, just want to remind everybody, on February 14th, Valentine's Day is also the 100th year for the League of Women Voters, the passage of the women's right to vote. Yes, very important. There's going to be a ceremony held here at the chambers on the 14th at 1:45 PM in the afternoon, so we'd like to see all these gentlemen and ladies who hopefully can attend. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? Alder from the ninth.
Sorry, my button went off. I just want to give a quick shout out to city staff, in particular Community and Economic Development, for their hard work in putting together the listening session for the shipyard and hosting representatives from the EPA and their building blocks grant program. Obviously, Matt Buchanan, who wrote the grant facilitated a lot of that work, but I know there were a lot of people from staff and in out of that meeting, including the mayor. I know some Alders had participated as well, but we had almost 100 people show up for the listening session on that Wednesday night, which was wonderful to see that level of feedback from our community and people taking an interest in what we're doing in that area. So also a thank you to council, because when you did approve that development agreement with the shipyard, that also included this neighborhood investment, and I think you're really going to see a strong payoff for that as this process starts to unfold. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, Alder. Any other announcements? All right, we are on to recognitions and awards. So I am pleased to announce to all of you, those who might not know, I think many of you probably have already seen the great news, that Joe Folds, our esteemed director of human resources, was recognized as a future 15 recipient, so he's going to be in the running for the Young Professional of the Year through current. So congratulations on that. Any speech for us?
Well, I don't think so.
Absolutely. All right, thanks. All right, we are on to item I, Report of the Improvement in Services Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Alder, motion by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the second to approve Report I, which is the report of the Improvement in Services Committee from the meeting on January 29, 2020. Any items to be handled separately?
Four.
Four and 10. Any others? Items four and 10 will be handled separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, the report has been approved, the exception of items four and 10.
Motion to approve item four.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the tenth to approve item four. The item was pulled by Alder from the ninth, I believe. Alder?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to move that we tabled this item.
Motion made by Alder from the ninth, second by Alder from the seventh to table. Discussion? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You guys have it? Item has been tabled. Onto item 10.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the first to approve. Item was pulled by Alder from the 12th. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two projects in this agenda item, and I'll be speaking on item 10. Sorry, obviously, item 10, but the water main and/or water services on Hillcrest Drive. As you all recall, we had about a year and a half ago, a rather controversial road project. We held it, and now that road is in the stages of being reconstructed, which is very much needed. So on Wednesday, there is a public hearing, and folks who live up and down Hillcrest were had the opportunity to learn more about the project. That same day, we had an improvement and service committee meeting, which we obviously approved the project. So around probably the last two or three weeks, I've had quite a bit of discussion with staff, with the water utility, Public Works, and, you know, three or four constituents who had reached out to me with some concerns. Obviously, with the wheel tax, the special assessments for the road is not levied against property owners, I should say residential property owners, but one thing that remains is the water assessment connecting to municipal water. So there was one constituent who is unable to attend today because he's ill. He's concerned about his large assessment for the water connection. Public Works will work with him, work on some possibilities in how to pay that, and look at some special circumstances that are found in our ordinances, so I just want that known. The other constituent, a married couple, they actually wanted to attend tonight but were unable to. They had a family situation out of state, so I would like to read their statement. They're in support of the project, but they had some concerns, so it's something that I offered to read, and they agreed to allow it, so I'd like to do that now. Hello, after attending the meetings tonight, we would like to state several concerns for consideration in the finalization of plans on this project. We live on the corner of Hillcrest and Renaissance at 3194 Renaissance Lane. Our primary concern is the destruction of the western edge of our property to connect the new water main to existing main on Renaissance. We already have city water as part of the King of Arms subdivision, yet we are being charged to go through our property 7,500 plus 12, or 1,700 for lateral into our extra lot. We'll have major destruction and change of the aesthetics of our lot due to leveling of our shielding berm and making of a ditch in its place. We will not have easy access from Hillcrest to our extra lot. We currently have a wood pile and a garden on our extra lot and the non-wooded portion of that lot, and frequently drive a truck from Hillcrest onto the lot to unload wood, drop off supplies for yard work, and the like. At the meetings tonight, we were told that we will have the berm leveled and a ditch will exist along that whole western edge of our lot. If this goes through as planned, we will lose the shielding berm from which we enjoy a good degree of privacy from the street. In addition, we will be unable to easily drive a truck onto our extra lot if there will be a ditch constructed along the west edge of the property. We were fully ready to concede the need for the water project, but we're very unhappy to hear exactly how much detrimental change would be occurring to our property. We essentially receive no benefit from this project as we already have city water and sewer. The loss of the berm will significantly decrease our water value due to the loss of privacy. Please consider a less drastic change to our berm, perhaps only cutting away an area for a small ditch on the east side of Hillcrest. Currently, our back lot is level, is currently our back lot level is well below the level of the street, and there exists a culvert and a yard drain in the eastern portion of our extra lot. The yard drain was placed by the city on our property years ago when the homes on the east on Royal Crown Court started experiencing water problems and basement flooding. I think this attests to the need for careful consideration of the effects of any construction along this corridor. In addition, we have concerns about the leveling of the berm. There are utility lines buried in the berm, a power pole on top of the berm, and we have an in-ground sprinkler system in place. I believe the sprinklers fully on our property, not the area in question, but could be affected if extensive demolition of the berm is done. Please actually come out to the property, not just look at your blueprints and see the extent of the changes you are proposing. Thank you for consideration in this matter, property owner. So just so you know, I did offer to go out to the property to inspect it. There was just a, they didn't get the email, and then they had to head out of town. So since then, I was speaking with Public Works, Steve Grenier, the water utility. If I could ask Director Grenier, just for the sake of the constituents concerned, to address and share with the council what we shared before the meeting.
Director Grenier.
Staff has gone out to the area to physically reconnoitre. The berm itself is located 100% within the public right of way, but staff has taken a look at drainage patterns out in the area. On the north end of the lot line that the constituent references as their back lot, the currently vacant one, there is a yard drain. It was installed by the city, but it is a private facility, and we are, it looks like we're going to be able to regrade and not take the berm down and get that water to flow north instead of south, where it will then pick up in a small ephemeral stream that currently exists that flows down and gets picked up by that yard drain. So we think we're going to be able to accommodate the wishes of the constituent with no problem. We are going to have a conversation with Community and Economic Services. There is an ordinance that prohibits having a driveway cut essentially leading to nowhere, which is what would happen with that, with what they refer to as their back lot. However, the design out here calls for what we refer to as a rolled curb instead of a vertical face curb. So as long as someone's driving slowly, you can creep up and over it. That's exactly what a rolled curb is designed for. So if you're familiar with the curbing that exists on East Shore Drive, that's what we're essentially talking about. So they will be able to have access. They won't have a formal driveway, and at such time that the property is developed and a building is put out there, then a formal curb cut can be put in.
Thanks, Director.
And I have one constituent here who would like to address the council, so I'd like Yes, sir. It's Paul and Terry Lewis. If I could make a motion to open the floor to hear from interested parties.
Motion made by Alder from the 12th, second by Alder from the seventh to open the floor. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, the floor's open. Sir, if you could just state your name and address for us?
Good evening. My name is John Remington. I live at 3207 Westway Drive. That's on the corner of Hillcrest and Westway. And my point, I don't even know how many times to count that I've been here for this with the water problem I have down there at my house. Westway runs east and west, uphill all the way west. Everybody, some pump water comes down there, all the rainwater comes down there, the snow melt runoff comes down there, and it all stops right in front of my house because the ditch is supposed to take the water down Hillcrest has built up with silt over the last 50, 60 years. It's to the top of the culvert, so the water just sits there. With reconstruction, my question is, I brought this up Wednesday night up in room 310, and I was told that the DNR considers the ditch wetland, and they can't even touch it with a shovel. I said, well, you can't direct more water from top of the hill with a curb and gutter down in front of my house because I have a water problem now. All of us on Westway have sump pumps running 24 hours a day. My basement's been flooding with water for over a year. When I bought that house 15 years ago, there was no water problem in my basement. I could take my riding lawnmower and go up to my ditch in Westway with a zero turn riding lawnmower. Every year, it gets worse and worse. It was marked out two years ago with red flags. I'm cleared to the city right away. My front yard's wetland now, because that ditch keeps getting worse and worse and worse, and the water keeps backing up and it keeps getting deeper and deeper. So I was told Wednesday night that they can't touch that ditch with the reconstruction. That's when, where is the water going to go this year? Now, and the additional water you're going to send down in front of my house? If the DNR is declaring it's wetland, I've been a truck driver all my life, driving the city rural roads, driving county roads, driving state highways. If that's the point that I'm trying to supposedly to believe, every ditch I look at, when they build a highway, they put a ditch there, and then once it's put there for water, that's a wetland that can't be touched anymore? It has to be cleaned out to keep water flow going. And this ditch, this is the problem that we're having with flooding up here on Hillcrest. So he's telling me you're not, they're not going to dig the ditch out. Is that true? It can't be, it can't be left like it is because the water can't go nowhere. That's why it's a wetland. I had pictures at all the meetings that I've been to before from my neighbors. Dietrich's owned that, and that was all his farm years ago. You would not believe it if you went out there right now and looked at it. The wetland, the swamp. When Dietrich had the farm, it was all trees, rolling hills, cornfields. It wasn't a wetland until this was neglected over all these years, backed all this water up, made a wetland out of it. So my question is, is the ditch going to be a focus and cleaned out to where we can get rid of this water? Because right now, the ditch is built up with silt. It's to the top of the culvert that crosses Westway at my house. Okay, they came out there a couple of years ago, and they jetted all the culverts out, and they x-rayed them. They had to shovel the end of the culvert out so they could jet it out. That's how much the ditch is built up, so it just holds the water. It can't go nowhere. And then it, water that's not moving freezes solid. So every winter, that ditch, what water's in there, that freezes solid. Come spring, we get the grains and everything, there we are with an ice dam. So like I say, my question is, is the ditch going to be cleaned out to where what was in depth originally, so this water will drain out of here? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Motion made by Alder from the 12th, second by Alder from the ninth to return to regular order. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, we are back in regular order. Alder from the 12th.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. For the sake of Mr. Remington and the council, if Director Grenier could address Mr. Remington's concerns.
Director Grenier.
As has been mentioned several times at the various public meetings that have been held on this project, the intent of this project is to reconcile issues with the drainage out there that do exist. There are limitations on what we can do. I understand Mr. Remington's concerns relative to things that may not have been a wetland before but are considered to be a wetland now. That is not our purview. We don't have any say over that. That is under the Department of Natural Resources, and we are obligated to follow their rules. So we have maximized the amount of work that we can do and still be under the permit conditions that the DNR has placed on the project.
In a situation like this, when you're dealing with wetlands, obviously, I understand the importance of wetlands, but given the fact that the city and under the mayor's leadership has really focused on flooding conditions and preventing flooding conditions, especially flooding that we know could exist, is there anything that the DNR would extend us? I mean, I just don't want this road project to go through and then have the same concerns because for the last year and a half, I've been telling constituents up and down the road that this project should, or at least I have been told, will alleviate the flooding. A peace of mind would be good, if possible.
Appreciate that, Alder. Alder from the 11th?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is for Mr. Grenier. On this type of construction where they're redoing the sewer and the water both, and then they're reconstructing the pavement itself, what is the cost for the water and the sewer per foot on, let's say, on that project? Are they going to have mini sewers in there as far as
There is no mini storm proposed as part of this project. And I can definitely look up what the assessment costs are, but because sewers are only assessed at the time of installation, so any work that has to be done on a sewer after the initial installation, the city does not levy assessments on those, so there will be no assessments for that. And with the advent of the vehicle registration fee, because these are residentially zoned properties, there will be no assessments for pavement out here. The only thing that's being assessed is the water main that's being, water main and water laterals, water services that are being installed for the first time.
So then, in other words, that's quite a reduced cost then for the homeowners?
Compared to what was originally planned for this, absolutely.
That's my question. I had somebody call me on it, and they'd like to know what was going on and as far as the cost, and that kind of gives us the information. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Alder from the fourth.
This is for Mr. Remington. I'm looking at a satellite picture of your property. Are you in the southwest corner of Westway and Hillcrest? And in your property floods, according to this satellite image I'm looking at? Well, I, well, I mean, he sat down before I could get a question in. Okay, just like, okay, that's all I want to know. Looking at this satellite view, across the street from Mr. Remington's property, it looks like there's either a man-made or a natural pond with a dock in it and everything else, and another body of water. I mean, if, is this, is this, I mean, if we're talking about wetlands and that, I'm just wondering how far that extends around that whole area? And if we're going to be getting tied up in something that, you know, I mean, how much can we do when there's that much area that has obviously standing water on it all the time? The other question I have is for Director Grenier. The first letter from the Louisis, they talk about a back lot. Does that lot currently have water going to it? So if someone were to build a home on that lot, would they have water, or is this hookup that's going to take place make that lot have running water and storm sewer and everything?
That I'm actually going to have to, I'm going to have to defer it to the Green Bay Water Utility, and Christopher Manowitz from Green Bay Water Utility is here with us tonight. She'll be able to answer that question for you. Thank you.
The second part of their lot, it's actually one single parcel. They purchased an additional adjacent parcel after they moved in there. It's approximately 100 feet along Hillcrest Drive, and that does not have water in front of it. That's the only portion that they have not already been assessed for.
So if someone were to build a house there or want to, they actually couldn't at this point because there's no water to hook up to?
They would have to have a well at this point.
Okay, so by, by the water coming in there, that actually adds value to the property in that at some point in time, if they wanted to, or someone that bought the home from them in the future could sell that lot?
Correct.
Okay. And then another question. All these homes on Hillcrest that are going to be getting water, currently they don't have water. Is that correct? They all, they all run off of wells?
There are a couple homes on, so we're putting water in from West Point to Renaissance, and the corner properties at West Point and at Renaissance. Those two individual properties are already served off of the side street. There is a second, or excuse me, a third parcel that has an unusual arrangement. They have water serviced through a parcel on Royal Crown Court. So of nine parcels, three are already served either off a side street or a back street through a different parcel.
And so water being added to those that don't have water currently, again, it allows them to subdivide their lots down or adds value to their property because they no longer have to maintain a well or anything else like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments, questions? There's a motion before us to approve the item. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, the item has been approved. Onto item J, Report of the Protection and Policy Committee. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the third to approve Report J, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee from the meeting on January 27, 2020. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Item five. Any others? Item five will be handled separately. All in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, the report has been approved, with the exception of item five. Wishes regarding? Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the third to approve. The item was pulled by the Alder from the eighth. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Corey apologizes. He got his days a little mixed up, and so he will be at the next meeting if we see fit to send it back. So I'm going to make a motion to refer this back.
Motion made by Alder from the eighth, second by Alder from the first to send this item five back to committee, Protection and Policy Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, the item has been referred back. Onto K, Report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the third to approve Report K, which is the report of the Protection and Policy Committee granting operator licenses. Any names for which you'd like to be recorded as abstaining? Any names under this report you wish to handle separately? Oh, sorry. Thanks, Alder. So any to be handled separately here? All right, hearing none. All in favor of the report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. If you guys have it, the report has been approved. Onto L, Report of the Plan Commission.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, second by Alder from the third to approve Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 2nd to approve report L, which is the report of the Plan Committee, Commission for the meeting on January 27, 2020. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the ayes have it, the report has been approved. Onto M, report of the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 6th to approve report M, which is the report of the Finance Committee for the meeting on January 28, 2020. Any items to be handled separately here?
Two.
Item two, any others? Item two will be handled separately. Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the ayes have it, the report has been approved with the exception of item two. Your wishes regarding? Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 4th to approve. Item was pulled by the Alder from the 9th. Alder, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions for Director Ellenbecker, just because I didn't, I watched the committee video on this, but I didn't think that these questions were answered. And I know that at the committee level, it was talked about how this is probably the first increase on, on these fees since anybody can remember. So it's been substantial amount of time since they've been reviewed. So I can appreciate that, that this is being brought to light. And I'm gonna have a communication to address that later at the end of today's meeting. But the, the question I had is, is the increase, I guess, generated from this? When I'm looking at the 2020 impact, it's not clear to me, this $47,000, is it because there's no quantity column in here? Is this the total amount that will be generated from the new fee? Or is this the increase that will be generated?
That is the increase that will be generated above what we already currently collect.
Okay, and so did we, did we budget that $47,000?
No, we did not.
Okay, and so when this money, presuming approval of this, when this money is taken in, does it just go to the general fund?
Yes, it would go in the general fund, revenues would be over budget, and yes, it would be in the general fund.
Okay. So there's no designated purpose for it at this time related to how we process this or things that you're doing in your department?
That is correct. Whenever we have an overage of revenues, it would just either offset other expenses that maybe went over, when the year is over, or would go to the fund balance.
Okay. And I can certainly appreciate that we're trying to bring ourselves into alignment with some of our neighbors. I guess maybe the concern that I have is, is some of these, I mean, are doubling in price. I did have a conversation with Don Medley from the Brown County Tavern League and the Class B liquors would ultimately affect most of their members, which is the one that's $100 increase. But the others that are going from 250 to 500, you know, I don't know that, there's, there's been a representative, I guess, discussion around those, meaning individuals impacted. So have we done any type of notification or notice that would allow individuals that would be affected by this to have an opportunity to speak for or against it?
We did not send any communication out.
Okay.
Ms. Jeffries, can you talk about some of the R H efforts you've attempted on that?
Surely, thank you, Mayor. So I did have an opportunity to speak with Don Meldy from the Tavern League, and they have been a great partner in a lot of the conversations around liquor licensing and as well with the costs. He, when I had my conversation with him and sent him the information, he had expressed comfort with it because we are in alignment with our neighboring communities. I also had attempted to reach out to the Restaurant Association to no avail.
Thank you. Alder? Thank you. And I think, much like Ms. Jeffries alluded to, Don did corroborate that and said that, hey, $100 increase, because the Class B is what would ultimately affect their members. What he suggested to me, you know, was that the Class As tend to be more of the gas stations. Would that be accurate? Or is there maybe a little bit more that could be shared on that front?
Right, the Class As are more of the convenience stores, the gas stations. Just what we're finding though is a lot of corporations or LLCs in that are now being owned by LLCs. So we have to keep in mind now that we are doing background checks on some LLCs that can have 25 people that belong to this LLC, and you can't have any silent partners. So we, we are seeing increases, you know, in, in that area. So I just wanna keep that in mind.
Okay. And I think certainly, I mean, that, that can tend to be a high-volume transaction type of business for some license holders. I'm just a little bit more concerned maybe for those mom and pop shops that this is a fairly substantial increase in one year with very little notification that this is forthcoming. And so would you, Chris, do you have any, or Ms., sorry, Clark Teske, do you have any indication of maybe like, how many of those license holders are, you know, like what, what their revenue looks like? Do we track any of that through their application process?
No, we do not.
Okay. Okay, and I think it's just one of those things where, again, I have a communication coming later at the end of the meeting to address maybe how frequently we talk about these increases. But I can't help but wonder if maybe particularly for the Class A, if, just to ease this burden a little bit and to communicate that this is forthcoming, if we might be able to, to do this over a two or three-year period versus doing it all at once? Are we able to legally obligate or make a decision today that could say that we're gonna increase it this much this year, this much the next year? Particularly since that this isn't a budgeted revenue item?
There is no issue with, with setting the numbers whatever you guys want to. Generally, the recommendation is that they, they reflect the actual costs. And my understanding is these don't really reflect the actual costs that are being incurred by the city in processing all of these. In other words, the numbers are too low right now.
Okay, Director Ellenbecker, could we get an explanation on that?
Between the staff time and the clerk's office and all the background checks that are being completed at the police office, police station, this is not covering the cost of some of the licenses. So that is why the recommendation was we would take it up to maximize and try to cover our costs for these licenses. But you do have the option of going anywhere between the 250 and 500.
Okay, thank, thank you for that explanation. I think it's, again, we-
And then one, one last thing you mentioned, bringing forward how often we look at these. As part of the new municipal reclassification process, the, all of the numbers that are set out, all of our fees that are currently set by ordinance will actually be turned into a resolution that you guys will adopt annually.
Okay, that might answer my question later, but might not. Thank you. Okay, I, I'm gonna make a motion on this and I'll let the chips fall where they may because I am a little bit worried about those smaller operations and how this might impact them. So I'm gonna move that this increase be, that it occur over two years, so that the first year would be, be, we're gonna split it. So the first year would be 125, the second year would be the next 125. Because I wanna be able to give some of these folks adequate notice that this is coming.
Motion made by Alder from the 9th, seconded by Alder from the 10th to incrementally make this increase.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification on that as well. I'm only referring to the Class A beer license and the Class A liquor license.
Very good. Thank you, Alder. Motion made and seconded, further discussion? Alder from the 7th.
Yes, I don't favor breaking this up. I mean, my, my experience at the Protection and Policy Committee is that, and as an Alder, working with many of these businesses, this is a substantial moneymaker for these businesses. I don't think we're putting a bite or a gouge on them in any way. And I just see no reason why we wouldn't do this all as a piece right now. I'm not really worried about hurting anybody. We're not removing any licenses, that would be, or denying licenses, that would be a definite, putting a business at risk. I don't see any problem here with that, so I'm not gonna support the motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 4th.
Thank you. I'm not gonna support it either, just for the reason that part of what the Alder from the 7th stated. You know, you look at this, $500, it's $40, just over $40 a month. I mean, it's a, it's a tank of gas. And, and from what I've learned from talking to some of these people, the reason why they opted to get these licenses and there was some fighting back and forth on that is because the income is pretty substantial with what they bring in on that. And I, I really don't see any station that I've ever been at or around or heard any of them talk where something like this would, would hurt them to that point where they'd have to think about closing shop. I, I understand, Alder from the 9th, it's, it's a nice sentiment, you know, 'cause this is kinda getting dumped on them. They're gonna have to find out about this. If they haven't been paying attention, they'll find out when they get their, their license renewed in a couple of months. But I, I can't support spreading it out. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments? The whole meeting? Alder from the 1st.
I also, we had a good discussion on this at finance, and I also can't support splitting it up. I don't think it's necessary. It's $20 a month in addition to what they're paying right now. And I just remember, I've gone to many of the protection policy meetings, I was on it for two years. We've granted many of these licenses. Sometimes, you know, we had to do a lot of thinking about granting a license in a neighborhood. And there, there was, you know, some controversy about doing that. And we, we always, we wanna treat everyone fairly, so that's what, that's what our goal was. These licenses do bring in a lot more income. Again, we're not being able to pay for the background checks. There's not enough money coming in to pay for the background checks and the work that's the city is doing already at the current rates. So I would like to see this go up right away to the 250. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Alder from the 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna support it, mainly because we're doubling their fees. And I bet you 99% of them, or maybe all of them, didn't even know about it. We didn't notify them, so they really didn't have a chance to give us their input. We're just guessing. Educated or not, we're just guessing on it. So I really would have liked to have seen them been notified and present their case. So that's why stretching it over two years, I think, is a better option. Thanks.
Thanks, Alder. Further comments? All right, the motion on the floor is from the Alder from the 9th, and we had a second from the Alder from the 10th to incrementally increase the fee for- Use the board? We will use the board. Motion fails, 7-4. Motion to approve made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 6th. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the ayes have it, the item has been approved. Onto N, report of the Park Committee. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 1st to approve report N, which is the report of the Park Committee from the meeting on January 28, 2020. Any items to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay, the ayes have it, the report has been approved. O, report of the Personnel Committee. Motion made by Alder from the 2nd, 7th, seconded by Alder from the 5th to approve report O, which is the report of Personnel Committee from the meeting on January 28, 2020. All in favor of the motion? Any items to be handled separately here? All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay, the ayes have it, the item has been approved. Onto P, report of the Public Arts Commission. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 1st to approve report P, which is the report of the Public Arts Commission from the meeting on January 22, 2020. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay, the ayes have it, report has been approved. Onto Q, report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Motion made by Alder from the 1st, seconded by Alder from the 5th to approve report Q, which is the report of the Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission. Any items under this report you wish to handle separately? Hearing none, all in favor of approving that report, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay, the ayes have it, the report has been approved.
Round of resolutions, you may under suspension of the rules adopt resolutions 1 through 7 together with one roll call vote.
Alder from the 2nd?
Yes, I'd like to pull number two for some amendments.
Okay, so- Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 10th to suspend the rules for all resolutions but for resolution number two. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay, the ayes have it. Motion made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 8th to adopt resolutions 1 through 7 with the exception of resolution two. We will use the board. Use the board. Resolutions are approved, 11-0. Onto resolution two. Alder from the 2nd?
Three amendments to add. The first one, the water main appurtenances, services within each of the street's road vocation area would become ownership of American Foods Group and considered private water main that no longer be owned or maintained by Green Bay Water Utility. Number two, the Green Bay Water Utility would continue to own and maintain water main services and appurtenances within the road closure area for each requested street closure. Green Bay Water Utility would require 24/7 access to our facilities within these areas. And number three, Green Bay Water Utilities' south limit of ownership would be a hydrant and valve on the south edge of each of the road closure areas.
Motion has been made by Alder from the 2nd, seconded by Alder from the 7th to amend the motion as was stated. Director Vonck, just, just explain why that was necessary.
Sure. Generally, when we do a closure and/or vacation, we ask the different departments for comments on these. Just based on some of the timing, we weren't able to get all of these before Plan Commission. So Plan Commission approved it with a whole list of, of conditions. These came from the Water Department after the Plan Commission meeting. So just wanted, for the record, to get them formally in. This will come back for a final resolution, but it was appropriate to, to add, add them in as part of the record tonight.
Very good. Thanks, Director. So the motion has been made to amend, has been seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the resolution has been amended. So we're now on the amended resolution. Motion to adopt made by Alder from the 7th, seconded by Alder from the 2nd, and we will use the board on this as well. Resolution is adopted, 11-0. Onto ordinances, reading for adoption.
You may- Just wait? You may suspend the rules to adopt this ordinance on the first reading with a two-thirds vote.
So Director Vonck, if you could explain why we might do that?
Sure, this was discussed in order to advance as to what is a final reading. These are changes to our ordinance, which will help us be in compliance with the state code. It's very important for us to be in compliance with the state code. It allows our inspectors to go out and write orders and make sure that we are in compliance with what the law is. So that is why we're asking this to be advanced, to be adopted this evening.
Very good. Thank you. So this will require, as the clerk stated, a two-thirds vote? Very good. Thank you. So this will require, as the clerk stated, a two-thirds vote. I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Alder from the eleventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth to approve, and we will use the board. It worked. Motion succeeds, 11-0. On to ordinances, first reading.
You may under suspension of the rules advance ordinances one through three to a second reading.
Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the ninth to suspend the rules, take up these items with one roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. The rules are suspended. Entertaining a motion. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the eighth to advance items one through three to a second and final reading. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those oppose nay? The ayes have it, and these have been advanced to the final reading. On to petitions and communications. Alder from the second.
This is for Traffic Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission, review traffic patterns and provide any necessary improvements for the I-43 business park.
Thank you, Alder. Alder from the ninth.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two tonight. The first is for Finance Committee. Director Ellenbecker, I'm sorry. Because I think this is going to be a big project. To provide an inventory of all fees charged by the City of Green Bay and create an annual cost accounting policy to review and recommend rate modifications as necessary. And the second, I think goes to Protection and Policy, and I just wrote this, so it's a little clumsy, I apologize. For consideration of possible action to create a diversity inclusion commission that will properly support the roles and responsibilities of the diversity inclusion coordinator and secure proper return on investment for taxpayers and benefit to all residents. Thank you, Alder. Any other communications?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to refer all petitions and communications. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the tenth to refer petitions and communications to the proper authority. All in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. Those petitions and communications have been referred. On to committee of the whole. Motion made by Alder from the seventh. Seconded by Alder from the tenth. Read the statement. Sorry.
The common council may convene in closed session pursuant to Section 19.85, subsection 1, subsection E, Wisconsin statutes for purposes of deliberating or negotiating public employee contracts for competitive or after reconvene in open session pursuant to Section 19.85, subsection 2, Wisconsin statutes to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
All right, we will use the board to go into close. We are back. Oh, return to regular order first. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the fifth to return to regular order. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. We are back in regular order. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the sixth to receive in place on file the item under committee of the whole. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. That has been received and placed on file. Motion made by Alder from the seventh, seconded by Alder from the ninth to adjourn. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? The ayes have it. We're adjourned.